Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order our Middlesex County meeting for Tuesday, March the fourteenth. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atawandarin, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Lenape'wak peoples who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Muncie Delaware Nation. The Middlesex County building is on a land within the areas of Treaties twenty-one and twenty-nine and the London Township Treaty six. We value the significant contributions both in the past and the present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in a spirit of reconciliation and respect. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none. Um, we do have an addition of to the agenda, and that is that a closed session be added to the agenda as part of item four B, which is the two thousand and twenty-three budget presentation, and this will be in order to consider personnel matters about an identifiable individual. Okay, so that we will be adding to our agenda, but I do need a mover and a seconder to add that and approve the agenda, Councilor Mayhew and Councilor Smibert. All in favor? And that's carried. So before we get going, this is a big morning for us, and it's been quite a process, and I want to take this opportunity to start by thanking, first of all, Cindy Howard for her leadership throughout this process. I also want to thank the members of the Budget Committee, Councilor Clark, Councilor Ropp, and Councilor DeVet. It's certainly been a process that I don't think any of us have gone through before, and but it was educational, challenging, and at times entertaining. So the draft Middlesex County budget for two thousand and twenty-three, it does continue to align and build on the county's strategic plan that we adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. The proposed budget reflects the county's commitment to investing in the core services that our residents rely on, while at the same time mitigating the financial impacts on our tax base. Like most municipalities in Ontario, we are experiencing significant budget pressures, including inflation, recruitment challenges, rising interest rates, population growth, and of course, supply chain delays. The initial draft budget that was presented to the Budget Committee had a tax rate increase of twenty-two point one two percent. The Budget Committee was able to reduce the tax rate increase to eight point four one percent. The draft budget can end as the morning unfolds, you will see how those decisions were made and how we were able to get to the number that is being presented to you this morning. The draft budget continues to support social service programs that assist our most vulnerable. It addresses food security, mental health, and our well-being. It addresses our businesses, families, and our children. As challenging as this budget has been, the Budget Committee believes that this budget supports a strong, vibrant, and healthy Middlesex County. So I know I am looking forward to the discussion that we're going to have this morning. As I say, I think that it will be fruitful and get your questions ready. At this time, I'm. Oh, sorry. So I do need a motion at this time that we convene as the committee of the whole, and I need a mover in a second for that, Councilor McGuire and Councilor Grantham. All in favor? And that's carried. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to welcome our friends from the Middlesex London Health Unit, Emily Williams and David, I hope I pronounce this the right way, Janus? Okay, Jan Soon, Jan Soon. Anyways, it's well, it's great to have you, it's great to have you here in person, it's been a few years since we've been able to welcome you to the building. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you, good morning to council and staff. Here, I'm the CEO of the Middlesex London Health Unit, and I'm here to present some context for our two thousand and twenty-three budget, which is in draft state, heading to our board this coming Thursday. So at this time, our provincial funding remains unknown, though we are anticipating some information on that in the next couple of weeks. We, we have connected with the health units across the province, and most are planning for a one to two percent increase pending provincial funding announcements, which would then see a pressure on the municipalities. Advocacy continues through our ALFA, the Association of Local Public Health Agencies, as well as AMO, and including last week's presentation or annual report to the province from the Chief Medical Officer of Health advocating for stabilized funding for public health. We are facing record inflation levels as everyone else is, but for our funding assumptions this year, we, we are planning flat funding from both the province and the municipalities. We have confirmed mitigation funding, so you may recall in two thousand and nineteen, the province was going to change the cost shared portion between the province and the municipalities from seventy-five twenty-five to seventy thirty percent, and then provided mitigation funding to us to offset that cost. It's about one point three six million for the health unit. That is going to continue for two thousand and twenty-three, as is COVID nineteen extraordinary expense funding. So we are again planning for no increase, and we are moving forward with our draft process. In terms of just the next slide, please, thank you. So we had introduced zero-based budgeting to the health unit in two thousand and twenty-two, starting with our general expenses. We did expand that to our staffing, and so essentially did from the ground up, line by line review of the staffing across the health unit to ensure that we are aligned with the standards that dictate the programs we provide, as well as the necessary staffing levels to deliver on our essential programs. We did review all of corporate services as well to ensure that those teams have the adequate support to support the teams across the health unit. We have negotiated our renewal with Canada Life for our benefits for staff, those are incorporated into the budget, and as noted, our general expenses were reviewed based on four years of actual spend, and then they were adjusted accordingly. This has achieved historic savings for the health unit. As noted, COVID nineteen funding is, has been confirmed by the ministry, we will use the same process we did in the past two years, which is submitting a budget to the ministry. We then receive about half of the funding within that, and then through quarterly reporting, they continue to flow based on our actual spend, the associated funds required. In public health, we also plan for a budgeted gap, and so this is actually to account for turnover in the agency or vacancies. We have struggled in the past couple of years, particularly with temporary funding, such as for the school-focused nursing initiative to recruit staff. I think folks are well aware of the strain on the health human resource market and the competition associated with that, and so temporary positions are not necessarily as attractive to staff as full-time positions that are very available in other parts of the market. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jan Soon now for an overview of the budget itself.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. Through you, Madam Warden. Good morning, everyone. My name's Dave Jan Soon, I'm the Assistant Director at the Middlesex London Health Unit. Today, I'm going to take you through our budget. We'll touch on the structure at the health unit, how we exactly deliver all of the programs, overview of our funding sources, we'll walk through at a very high level the salaries, benefits, and general expenses, touch on COVID nineteen, the trending there, also the seniors dental, which will be of interest, and our second company, which has four programs, will wrap up the presentation with a consolidated view of our budget. So to enable the programs, you'll see there, we do have two separate companies, really driven by their fiscal year ends. We have six divisions, forty-nine different departments, all coming together to deliver fifty-four different programs. From a financial point of view, we track everything through just under fourteen hundred active GL accounts, and when we look at the budget, this year, there was a lot of focus on zero-based budgeting. We did introduce zero-based budgeting in two thousand and twenty-two for general expenses. This year, through about a three-month program, we looked at zero-based budgeting through staffing. The budget required just over two hundred different files. It is zero-based, and we were able to offset inflation through savings. So our funding sources, jumping to the bottom of the screen there, the funding envelope for us this year is about fifty million dollars. Different branches of the ministry are providing about eighty percent of that funding. The city and the county provide another eighteen percent, and then we pick up a little bit of money for our discrete funded programs through Public Health Agency of Canada in Ontario, and we do generate some revenues internally through client services. So this slide is intended to bridge two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three salaries. It is a fairly high-level budget, it is draft, so some of the details are withheld until this sees our board on Thursday. So when you look at the shared funding, there's about twenty-one million dollars of salaries and salaries in there. The realignment or restructuring within the health unit saved about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that was offset through inflation of two percent on, on staffing. When we look at the grand total there, you see that salaries were forty-four million dollars, and they dropped to thirty-two million dollars. Shared funding, pretty much flat for us, there was sixty-eight thousand dollars of additional cost. The big driver there is obviously the reduction of COVID, which we'll see in a future slide. We have increased the number of nurses in schools, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We've also increased our seniors dental for another just under a million dollars, and we've reduced, we do have some reduced funding from the City of London for our cannabis program, that's Cliff, and then some other minor adjustments for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So the benefit slide again bridges from two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three, fairly similar. Our benefits are provided through Canada Life, they were renewed in January of two thousand and twenty-three. There's really two policies around our benefits, the premium side of the policies, we're seeing, seeing again a seven point two percent increase or a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar impact to the health unit. The ASO, or the Administrative Services Benefits, covering really health, drug, and vision, and dental. Health and drugs surprisingly was fairly flat, had a two percent increase, but we are seeing substantial increases on dental. We're expecting that as COVID diminishes, more people are feeling more comfortable to get back into the dentist, so we are seeing the increases there. Interesting to note, the last point on this slide is a nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of inflation. You may recall that Omer's opened up their membership effective January the first to allow non-full-time employees to join. That's costing the, the health unit eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, mostly driven from our contract staff through COVID and school-focused nurses initiative. General expenses, fairly small amount in, in the grand scheme here, but we were able to save five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars again this year. Not sure if we're going to be able to do that last year, because this was zero-based in two thousand and twenty-two, and again, zero-based in two thousand and twenty-three. We were able to save the five twenty-three, though, while building in an accelerated payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on our variable loan payment. We do have an internal challenge to reduce cell phones by twelve thousand dollars, and really, those two items are highlighted there for our board consideration. When we look at reserves, although we don't have a lot of reserves, we do have a net impact this year of thirteen thousand dollars, it's excluded from the numbers above, and really what that is, is a drawdown of about eighty-seven thousand dollars from our employment cost reserve offset with a hundred thousand dollar contribution to our funding stabilization reserve. If this is approved by our board on Thursday, our reserve balances will be just over a half million dollars at the end of the year. COVID nineteen, we continue with two programs here, vaccine and case and contact management, or as the ministry refers to it as our general program. For note, this is a one hundred percent funded program, the ministry is funding one hundred percent of these costs for two thousand and twenty-three. Consistent with prior years, surplus from mandatory programs must be used to reduce COVID expenses before we ask for reimbursement. That's been in, in line since two thousand and eighteen. So you can see two thousand and twenty-two COVID budget was twenty-eight point one million, and this year, we're reducing it to ten point seven million, again, of considerable reduction on COVID. On the vaccine side, that's really the clinics across the community. We are seeing a reduction in the number of clinics in the budget for two thousand and twenty-three, which of course requires less staffing and less upkeep, less lease payments, case and contact management. We're also lowering that from a salaries point of view, and it's four point five million dollars. Seniors dental, interesting one for you folks. We are happy to announce that the Strathroy Operatories, we're expecting those to be up and running in May or June of this year. That's great news for the folks out there in Strathroy. This budget really represents that dental operatories in Strathroy coming online. You can see we've increased the number of staff out there, and we've increased the budget to support those operations. Our second company has a fairly small amount running through it, it's about three million dollars. The fiscal year here runs from April to March, it has four programs in there. Best beginnings is funded from the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services, that's two point five million dollars that we receive annually from them. Public Health Agency of Canada also supports about another two hundred and sixty thousand for Food Net and Smart Start for Babies, and we also have a shared library services program funded from Public Health Ontario. From a consolidated perspective, our shared funding, which is really the ministry, the city and the county, our budget's coming in fairly consistent, last year, thirty-one million again, discreet funding is eighteen million, giving us a consolidated budget of forty-nine point six million. If we could go next, please. You can see here that our health unit is comprised of about seventy-seven percent of our budget goes to salaries, wages, and benefits, and general expenses are running twenty-three percent. When we look at discrete funding, last note here, there are eight programs that make up that eighteen million dollars, COVID being the largest, followed with seniors dental at three point seven million, best beginnings, the school-focused nurses initiative, which is really putting more nurses in the schools, one point four million, the City of London for our cannabis legalization program, Smart Start for Babies, Food Net, and Shared Library Services. With that, thank you very much, and any questions, we'd be happy to answer, thanks.
Great, well, thank you very much for that overview and presentation of the health unit's budget. Questions from the committee? Going once? I do have to say, the Strathroy Dental Clinic is something that not only Strathroy Care Doc, but the whole of Middlesex County is pleased to see. I was able to talk to Dr. Summers and Emily about a couple, a few weeks ago about this, and we're really looking forward to the opening of it. It certainly does show an investment in Middlesex, and we're really pleased, so we'll be looking for details on the opening of that. Okay, one last call out for questions. Okay, thank you very much. I would encourage my colleagues, it is a big budget, and it's a lot of information to, to take in, but if, if questions come up in your review of the, what's been presented this morning, or in the year as it goes on, certainly our representatives on the health unit can take those questions back, but I also know that the team at the health unit is open to any sort of discussion that you might want to have, and I would encourage you to explore those opportunities and avenues if you're looking for more questions and clarification. Councilor Ropp?
Thank you, through the warden, I do have one question, and that is, do you see for next year or the following year, quite a bump in your labor costs due to our cost of living for everyone working for you as well?
Through you, Madam Warden, our contracts are locked in place until two thousand and twenty-five with a maximum inflationary increase of two point five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Councilor McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So I do sit on the Finance Review Committee, Finance and Facilities Committee, I guess, for MLHU. So I have already seen a presentation on this, I can tell you that when they tell us that there's been a line-by-line operational review restructuring, it was very, very in-depth, and I was quite impressed by how open and transparent they were to us in presenting that, and that they really kept to the concept of the zero-based budgeting. So I thought they did a great job presenting that, just as they have given us an overview of it this morning.
Great, thank you very much for those comments, Councilor McGuire. All right, thank you for joining us, we do appreciate it, we'll let you get on with your day. Right, thank you so much. I do need a mover and a seconder that the MLHU two thousand and twenty-three budget presentation be received for information, Councilor DeVet and Councilor Clark? All in favor? And that's carried. So at this time, it gives me pleasure to be able to turn things over to Cindy Howard, our General Manager for Finance and Community Services, and she is going to walk us through our budget. Thanks, Cindy.
Thanks, and through the warden, well, good morning, County Council. This is the two thousand and twenty-three budget process. So for the budget meeting, I have a presentation, I don't know if it shows you how many slides, there's quite a bit, so I will be fast, I do talk very fast, so I will try to slow it down a bit. The presentation really will show highlights of the major changes proposed in each one of the departments. Then we will also walk through the budget summaries, and all of the department heads are here today, so they can answer directly to the questions that you may have in regards to their budgets. I would also like to point out that you're going to see a few pictures in the presentation, there's one right here, and Paul, I think everybody knows Paul from Corporate Communications, these are some of Paul's pictures. I thought it would be kind of neat to put a county flair to that with a staff member, and these pictures are all located in the county, so if you want to know where they are, you can reach out to Paul and have a conversation. Thanks very much. So the budget agenda, just quickly, so obviously, I have a few definitions we'll talk about. Once again, I will talk about COVID nineteen, strategic plan to the budget process, we have a written introduction from the warden, the Budget Committee recommendations, we will go into closed after I go through the Budget Committee recommendations, then we will go into the department budgets, where we have highlights, summaries, the budget drivers, and then very lastly, at the end, will be the reserves and the reserve funds. Next? Next. So I'll point out here, for anybody that may be watching our budget process, is the county is, is made up of eight lower-tier municipalities that are listed here, you can see we are a very large county geographically, next. This chart just shows some of the demographics, and I would like to point out, as the county continues to grow, we do see diversity that is in our county, and as we go forward with their budgets today and into the future, those are some of the things that we'll need to think about and take into account when we're delivering our programs and services. Next. And this shows the population, again, I point out that you can see the growth, if you look at the census of two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, you can see the greatest change if you look at Lucan Bedolph, if you look at Strathroy Care Doc, Thames Centre, and Middlesex Centre. We are seeing growth across our county, and I'm sure when we see the next census, we're going to see growth in every single one of our municipalities. Why I think that's important as we're talking about budget is because growth does impact our budget. We continue to see new services that we need to deliver and new programs. So as we go on, those are some of the things that we need to think about, and I also point out diversity, we need to think about that, too. So if we have individuals that maybe are moving from Toronto into some of our local municipalities, they're used to certain programs and services, so we have to think about that as we move forward, next. So this is just the organization chart, what I'll point out here is that there's fourteen different business units that are very unique and different in each one, as we go through the budget, you'll be able to see that, and all of our department heads again are here today. Next? Next, so definitions. I point these out because during the budget process, we do talk about a number of these, so of course, we talk about the levy, so that is the amount, the total amount we need raised, and that's what we issue out to our local municipalities. I point out real growth, because that is new money that comes into the county that can be used towards levy, so when I mean new growth, that's new homes, or if anybody does in addition to their home, that's considered new money. Next? Sorry, if you can go back for a second, I should point out, we also have MPAC, and I want to point out that the last reassessment was done in two thousand and sixteen, we haven't heard when the new reassessment will be done, so when we're looking at the assessment in two thousand and twenty-two, it's the same as in two thousand and twenty-three, until we see some changes that will happen from MPAC, next. So hopefully, this is the last year that I talk about COVID nineteen, or have a few slides in the budget. So COVID nineteen has impacted every single department across the county from two thousand and twenty, and I'd say we still see some of that lingering impact into two thousand and twenty-three, especially if we look at our land ambulance and long-term care. Next? So over the, oh, so can you go back one? So over the period of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three, we have received funding from other levels of government, so, and we continue in two thousand and twenty-three to see funding for long-term care and land ambulance. We also receive from the county safe restart funding, if you go next. I've actually done a reconciliation, so it shows the total amount of funding that we received, which is that two point nine million, and we went over a period of time from two thousand and twenty to actually this year allocating the final amount into two thousand and twenty-three. The Budget Committee did make the recommendation to allocate money into two thousand and twenty-three, because as I said, we really are still seeing those impacts of COVID on our residents, our businesses, and of course, our county operations. Next. So you heard the warden talk about the strategic plan, so I have a couple of slides that I'll go quickly through. In two thousand and twenty-one, council adopted the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four strategic plan. The plan is comprised of four areas of strategic focus, cultivating community vitality, connecting through infrastructure, strengthening our economy, and promoting service excellence. Next? The plan includes the themes innovation, modernization, collaboration, responsiveness, and leadership. Next? So this slide is why I wanted to tie in the strategic plan, because our budget does directly link to the strategic plan and the priorities that are in the strategic plan, and our department plans, of course, feed into our budget, so they all do align, which is very important. Later on in the year, I know that I'll be coming back to kind of give you an update on the strategic plan and a report card that talks about some of the achievements of our strategic plan. So the budget process, finally, we're into that part of it. So the departments each um, the the departments each submitted a budget um by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, can you go to the next slide, Greg? Which the timelines? There we go. Um, the Budget Committee then met to review all of the um department budgets and made recommendations. Today, we're here for review and approval by County Council. The approval actually happens at the next council meeting. And then the next step, of course, will be later this month, will be the tax rates when we look at those in detail. Next. So our budget philosophy, I think we just heard from the health unit, how they go and look at a zero-based budgeting. We also, I believe, look at that as well, is each department head really has to look at their budget, think about their operations, what they do each year, what changes needed to be made. But some of the things I would highlight is that we eliminate non-essential budget increases, and we're going to hear a little bit about the Budget Committee recommendations. We also always consider more efficient and effective processes. We are, and that would be a little bit of some of the modernization that we've done in the last few years, and there's some examples of that in the budget as well. We align, obviously, the priorities with the strategic plan, and then, of course, we continue to invest in sound asset management practices. And you'll know a lot of that from our Transportation Department. Next. So I've kind of um quickly tied in a couple, I believe, of the highlights or the investments in this year's budget, so you can see how they directly align with the strategic plan. So for community vitality, we have investments in our long-term care, in our social housing, in our land ban- and ambulance, and of course, in our children's services. So as I go through the budget, we'll talk a little bit about Quelk, but that is a huge investment that the federal and the provincial governments um put into our communities. It, the other known term for it is the ten dollar a day childcare. So very excited. We started implementing that in two thousand and twenty-two, and we'll carry forward in that in twen- two thousand and twenty-three and going forward. Next. Connecting through our infrastructure, so this is investments in bridge, cycling, and of course, our road system. Next. Is strengthening our economy. So we have investments in tourism, supports for business, and of course, workforce planning. Next. Uh, promoting service excellence. So this is where we, you will see our investing in modernization. Staff well-being, I used a land ambulance example here, and of course, our community transportation. So as you know, we got a grant from the provincial government for community transportation, and of course, we did launch it in the middle of COVID. I'm happy to tell you, though, that the rider stats are increasing. Um, we've been really looking at that in close detail because we have a few years to go. In our upcoming meeting, um, you're going to be actually seeing a presentation on community transportation, and of course, results from that federal funding that we got and the consultant that looked at transportation needs across the county. And thanks very much to Cara because she's worked closely with me around community transportation for the last couple of years. Next. So the commu- the budget was impacted by a number of things. So first of all, we have assumptions. And I'll point out, land ambulance is another great example of that is in regards to our funding, is we have to put the budget together, but we really don't know what our budget from the provincial government will be until later, close to the summer. So we make an assumption based on past practices. We also have past decisions by council, so that will be key strategic and business plans that have been approved. And I already mentioned the impact of MPAC in our two thousand and sixteen assessment that we're still working with. Next. I use this slide every year, and unfortunately, every year it keeps declining. So in two thousand and twenty-three, once again, we did get a reduction in the OMPF funding. Why it's important is because that really does impact our residents, and if we don't get this funding, that has to go directly onto our levy. So we could talk about that further another time, but um and how we can advocate and try to lobby with the province. If there's any way we can get that to go up instead of going down. Next. So we are on to the Budget Committee recommendations. I think you've heard from the warden that it was a long journey with lots of questions. Um, it was the toughest budget that I've been through since I've been here at the county. Um, we've had a lot of pressures, and we're not the only one. I know I've talked to other um county treasurers across the system. You've probably been reading a lot in the paper, what's going on in some of our local municipalities. We all face this pressure. A lot of it has to do with inflation, but there's a number of other ones that we'll talk about later. So the first one was the revisions to made to the department budgets. So that is a re-total uh reduction of three point five eight million dollars. So I'll kind of go through each one. So for the administration, it was a total um of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine. So a couple of things that happened here, we increased the rent replacement by two hundred thousand. So I will go back. In the year of the sale of the county building, we did receive some money that we put away, and we called it rent replacement in regards to, we used to get rent from the health unit. So we wanted to, I guess, streamline that money over a period of twenty years. So this year, instead of being the four hundred thousand, we added an additional two hundred thousand one time only, just to help with the pressures in the budget. The second thing was interest income. We are still seeing good um results. So I had a discussion with uh my manager, Ewa, who is here today, and we kind of went back and seeing, do you think we can add a little bit of revenue here to help offset? So we put in another twenty-five thousand. On the expend- expenditure side, we had some human resource items that we're going to be discussing in camera. But we also had a couple of um reductions. So one has to do with the procurement officer position. It actually was approved in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. We hadn't hired yet. So we are actually going to be deferring that until two thousand and twenty-three, or that's the recommendation. Twenty-four, sorry. Um, we also, and I'll go to each one individually, but the student positions overall were deferred for this year. And the student positions were in legal, clerks, economic development and planning. So in planning and woodlots, the total amount was a hundred and ninety-three thousand and eighty-one dollars. So that's made up of revenue. There's an increase to the planning fees, and I believe Dirk is coming with a presentation at County Council, so there'll be a bit more detail about that of twenty thousand. We also had for the expenditures, we had a special project, which was population, housing and employment forecast update of seventy-five thousand. And just to let you know that Dirk has actually already went and tried to see if he can get a grant for that funding. And if you can't get a grant for that one, maybe we could work together to see what else is out there to support that, because we do think it's important work that needs to be done. Again, I'll point out, it was a hard budget year. Um, hard decisions were made. And the last piece there was a contingency for the impact on the Conservation Authority. So that's a provincial change, and that was for fifty thousand. The next one is economic development, and the reduction here is a hundred nine, hundred and ninety-one thousand and seventy-nine dollars. And it's really related to new staff positions that were aligning with the economic development strategy. And there was two new positions in there and the student position. So those both, or those three were deferred in this year. The next one is information technology for fifty thousand, and that was a reduction to the capital projects of that fifty thousand. The next one, I hope I'm not going too fast, is transportation, which was two million, three hundred and forty thousand. So there was a reduction in the winter maintenance. There was a reduction in the investment in bridge capital. And then there was the use of the wind farm compensation reserve of eight hundred thousand for County Road Seven renewal. So the wind farm compensation is a revenue that will be used for the County Road Seven renewal. Hopefully, I explained that right. There's Strathmere Lodge. So the reductions there were associated with capital. So when you see the budget, there is actually two capital projects that were approved. The rest were deferred for two, for into two thousand and twenty-four. Again, that was a total of a hundred and sixty-four, seven thirty-nine. We also have a human resource item that we will talk about in camera. We have the library, which was two hundred and twenty-four thousand and sixty-five. We deferred some capital items, which was a total of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. We also had um a human under the salaries. We actually did a reconciliation. So we kind of went back with Lindsay and went back with the Finance Department, so we were just able to make some tweaks. It does not affect service delivery at all. So that was part of that amount as well. So that's the total for the s- the um departments. So the next one has to do with provincial COVID nineteen. I've mentioned this a couple of times already, but the last amount that we had was two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight. We've also identified where that money could be used towards. So we did have a couple new staff positions that were in our budget that could definitely be applied because of the impacts of COVID nineteen, and that is in human resources. Um, so that human resources position will be used to support the county and also the lodge, which is another one of our growing departments that we have. Also, we have a new position in information technology. And we have um a new position in Strathmere Lodge, which is the laundry. When we, when we talk about the lodge, we'll talk about some of the great investments from the province, so we can re-increase some of our staffing. Um, however, there is other impacts where we are not getting funding, and laundry is one of those. And then the funding will also partly offset our electronic health software for long-term care home. So this is another modernization project, which really will help the lodge with um documenting health outcomes for our residents. Next. So under the transportation, so there's a recommended reduction of five hundred thousand. This comes from the Winter Control two thousand and twenty-two surplus and from the Winter Control Reserve Fund, three hundred thousand and two, well, it's actually two hundred thousand and then three hundred thousand. And this is a one-time-only recommendation from the Budget Committee. Next. Um, is the library surplus of forty thousand. I will point out, when we get to the library budget, you will see a surplus that is part of the budget. Traditionally, the libe- library surplus goes back to the library. But during COVID, we obviously, because change of business operations, we were seeing more surpluses coming in. So that's when the Budget Committee started making recommendations. A portion would go towards the library budget, and then a portion um would go back into the county. So this year, we expect um the total to be of a hundred and seventy thousand. So if you look at the amount, which is in the library budget is a hundred and thirty, that difference is how you get to the forty thousand. Again, that's a projection. We're still working through year-end and all the entries that we have to do, but we're very comfortable with this number in front of you. And again, the direction is for a one-year only. I expect we're not going to see those same surpluses as we go into the future because of uh COVID impacts, I'm hoping, will be a lot less as we go forward. Next. And then the last big budget recommendation is to go look at tax rate stabilization. And I do strategically put it at the end because this is the last um item that um the Budget Committee will actually look at. If you don't have to use tax rate stabilization, they won't, but in this case, um felt that we needed to. So just so you know, past practice has been to apply the budget surplus every year to the tax rate stabilization. Again, I'll point out, we're still in the middle of year-end. We're still going through it all. But I would say we roughly expect at this point in time to have about a one point two million dollar surplus that will go into the tax rate stabilization. And the whole purpose of the tax rate stabilization um is to that it will be to offset tax increases. So I would say that has been using, used um appropriately in this case. Next. So at this point, I think um we will go into the camera just to have a conversation around the Budget Committee recommendations that tie directly to uh personnel matters.
Okay, um. Okay, so I'm going to ask um the department heads and everything, everybody to leave at this point. Oh. Okay, so we are going to go in camera. So I'm sorry. Um, I should have probably thought about this before. So if everybody can just, I I don't imagine that this will take long. Um, so don't go too far. Um, but with that, I would ask for a mover and a seconder um to move in camera, and that's at ten forty-seven. And that is, of course, to discuss some personnel items. Counselor DeVit and Counselor Grantham, all in favor?